How are you?
Good.
Oh, we got seven. Great.
Okay.
The next person we're missing is Mr. Bedell.
Everyone should be unmuted now.
Okay, great.
Okay, we're ready to start? We are. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Keith Taylor, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble to my right, Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. I hope you have picked up a copy of the Public Hearing Guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the format we will use for the meeting, and the agenda lists the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to Planning Commission agendas. By doing this, you'll be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission has held a previous public hearing for PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Series LLC on July 8th, 2024. The Commission is holding an additional public hearing on PC 2724 tonight, per county council order dated September 10th, 2024. If there are no public comment discussing significant concerns with the petition, the Commission will consider forwarding the letter of recommendation concerning PC 27-24 during executive session immediately following the public hearing. The Commission will not make a decision regarding PC 3524 tonight. The Commission will receive a staff report and make a decision on PC 35-24 at the next executive meeting on November 4th, 2024. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted through the Department of Planning at least one week prior to the next executive meeting by October 28th, 2024 will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlewiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendation will then be forwarded to the county council, who has a responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed at 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Persons speaking as an individual will be allowed at two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. The purpose is to make a crowd count part of the record for each petition. Now, the first petition heard tonight will be PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners. PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC is a request for a mended development in the M3 and FPM3 industrial districts for the purpose of office warehouse, including outdoor storage, on a 7.22 acre tract located in the north side of Baumgartner Road, approximately 1,500 feet east of Baumgartner Industrial Drive. From the county context map, the subject site is located in the south county, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. This is a larger aerial. The site is surrounded by single-family large lots, development and industrial development. This is also, this is the land use map. So the north of the site is single-family homes. To the east, industrial development. To the south, is single-family homes and the Meramek River. And to the west are single-family homes in non-urban industrial districts. This is to the north, showing the public hearing notice. This is to the north, showing the subject site. This is east along Baumgartner Road. This is west along Baumgartner Road. This is south, showing the residential development across Baumgartner Road. This is to the north, showing the existing cop car to the side. This is to the north, showing the existing gate inside. This is to the north, showing existing parts on the site. This is to the east, showing the Ballintine, Nutten, and Santa Fe Railroad. This is to the north, is showing abandoned buildings on site. Also north is showing the abandoned buildings on site. This is to the west, also showing the existing buildings on site. This is to the west, showing the existing residential development.
The petitioner representative here? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Mr. Trimble, for the record, my name is George Stock. I'm with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Block Holly. Joining me this evening is Mr. Jeff Hawley, owner under contract of this particular piece of property. We were before you in July of this summer and presented this same petition. Shortly thereafter, like the next day, I received a phone call about a potential prospective user interested in this property, actually two. What we had presented was a request to rezone the property or an amendment to the M3 ordinance to develop the 7.218 acre site that fronts Baumgartner Road. We went over the topography of the site. There's about 40 feet of relief from Baumgartner Road down to the bottom of the property. It's got a little bit of a irregular shape. It has floodplain corridor along the northern portion of the site, as well as transmission, Ameren transmission lines that run through the site. It does have a piece of property that extends and connects into Old Baumgartner Road. Our request did not include access to Old Baumgartner Road. We are not asking for access to Old Baumgartner Road. We would accept a stipulation within the ordinance prohibiting access to Old Baumgartner Road. The site plan that we had presented to you that evening was a 30,000 square foot building. That 30,000 square foot building is depicted in brown, and then gray is a combination of car parking, which would be on the south side of the building, single point of ingress and egress to Baumgartner Road. This building, if you recall, and I'm showing in a moment, also had overhead doors on the sides that you could drive into the building, and had overhead doors on the north side to an outside storage area. That outside storage area with this plan of 30,000 square feet was about 75,450 square feet of paved area, both combination outside storage and staging for this building. Mr. Hawley was proposing to build this building as a speculative building, potentially two tenants, two 15,000 square foot tenants. The outside storage area is roughly 75,450 square feet, so it comprised about 24% of the site. So there's really just a certain amount of the site that can develop. It's generally what's in gray, and then the green are buffers that are either stormwater management, that Ameren transmission easement that I had spoken about, or the floodplain that bifurcates the property. Shortly after the public hearing, I contacted staff about a potential two users who still have an interest in this property. Those would be single tenant tenants, and the building in at least one of the cases would be a 60,000 square foot building. So again, that footprint of the site, the green area, the buffers, all remain the same. The access to Baumgartner Road remains the same. The only difference is, this building is now 30,000 square foot bigger. There are no drive-in doors on the sides, so the dock doors are only on the north side, and the area of outside storage and/or staging shrinks. So the building got 30,000 square foot bigger. The storage area shrunk down to 56,000 square feet, or 17.8% area of the site. So I believe the recommendation that came out of the Commission was to allow up to a 60,000 square foot building, but that night at the public hearing, I did not present a site plan that was representative. So I want to make sure that the Commission sees, you know, the either/or, because again, the next step in this process, once we have amended P M3, is to file a site development plan and go through that process with staff. With regards to, that's, the significance in the change is really the size of the building. As I mentioned a moment ago at the public hearing, I didn't know about a potential user for the, for the building and the site. Some discussion about that outside storage. Under either plan, there's a note over to the right, so we have a six-foot site-proof fence that goes around the perimeter of the storage area, and that in combination with landscaping, both on the south, the east, and the north sides, provide adequate buffering. We would, we would not be looking for restrictions on hours of operation. Again, similar to my office building, it's open 365 days. Not that we're open. We're open Monday through Friday, but it doesn't have a restriction on hours of operation. So particularly with tenants, they need to have the ability to come and go, so we would not be, we would hope that the Commission would not impose hours of operation. And then regarding the access, just want to make sure that we are not asking for any access to Old Baumgartner. And then relative to the, to uses, we really see this as an office flex industrial owner-occupied, you know, facility, you know, a company that, you know, may have workforce needs for trucks, need for distribution, need for storage, as well as office. So it's really a light industrial application, flex-type building where it provides multiple components. What it's not, what we're not asking for, is a marijuana dispensary or production facility. So again, relative to restrictions that we ask that you impose is no access to Old Baumgartner Road and restriction on marijuana facility. So just want to make sure that that's clear. Again, I hope it's somewhat familiar, because it was just July when I was before you. So it's really these two different site plans, and we'll get into the details of that once the zoning is complete and file a very detailed formal site development plan, as opposed to these preliminary development plan. But relative to the architecture, it's, it'll be a handsome, let me get to the right slide, handsome facility, concrete tilt-up, which is very common with these types of buildings. There's a landscape plan, so again, landscaping on all four sides of the building, and again, that will be reviewed in greater detail as we move through the process. But the building itself, a combination of concrete tilt-up coating or painting of the panels generally reveals, and again, different painting textures to give some character to the building, glazing, canopies over the front doors, and then you see the roof step, the parapet's taller to screen mechanical equipment on the building, and this is really a perspective from Baumgartner bird's eye. I'd say looking northeast under this plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Mistress Hawley's here, and we certainly appreciate your support in July, and hope there will be support this evening, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, Commissioners?
Are you able to share the potential tenants?
Okay, so RJP Electric, who I've had several conversations, and/or ABC Roofing. So those are the two. I'm not sure exactly where ABC is, but RJP is in South St. Louis County right now. New ownership of the company, growing, doing very well, and the first thing was 30,000 wasn't big enough for them, but didn't need as much storage outside area as we were showing. So the 60,000 is a perfect fit.
And what, what area outside storage? I thought you said 75,000, but...
Yeah, so... Well, you know what? Be easy. I think you can probably see it here. So the area of outside storage, so this is the 60,000 square foot building, for what I have red encircled, so let me put it up on the screen. If I get it going the right way. Okay, so that's the 60,000 square foot building.
Inside the fenced area, I think it.
Sorry, this is right. So this is, this is generally the area that I circled in red. That's the 56,000 square feet or 17%.
That's enclosed in the pink.
It would be, it would be a six-foot site-proof fence around that area. Yes. And that's noted to the right on the drawing, lower right.
I guess I do. Is that fencing on the property line, or it's just on the storage? It's on the pink?
Yeah, so the blue is the property line.
Right.
The dark blue line, and so the green, I think there's 31 feet that's on the west property line till you get to the access drive.
Right.
So the fence itself would be tucked up tight to the gray area, so...
Add it, yeah.
And then I think there's 96 feet to the north property line, and then even further, and that's, that's all heavily vegetated, so...
And this wouldn't be any retail at all?
No retail.
It would just be running trucks?
Yeah, so basically normal operation, you know, an office building with workforce, so the trucks, and then Monday through Friday, they go out on jobs, and/or, you know, the delivery of equipment, in the case of electrical contractor, equipment that's in the warehouse, they load the trucks and leave. So normal, the outside storage, some of that component is really trucks and some electrical equipment, all within a fenced area.
And if I, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation of the, of the Commission back in July was also that that site be decorative and site-proof, as well as there were, while Mr. Stock did show some architectural elevations this evening, there were actually, I would say that those will actually improve somewhat based on your recommendation, because you did recommend additional finistration and high-quality material. So there will be even improvements to, to these that Mr. Stock is showing you this evening. Should the Commission recommend approval and the council concur?
Question regarding, I guess, the property to the west?
To the west is a single-family residential, yes.
And then landscaping, is there any buffer there to lessen that?
So that's an interesting, and I don't know if they're here tonight. They were here at the, the public hearing. They didn't speak at the public hearing, but they certainly support the project, and I know they sent an email. The answer is yes. So we, we are, our drive is 31 feet off the west property line. That would be a green strip and landscaped, but there is a portion on our property of where their driveway is. I can't get the, if I can enlarge it.
You can't. You can't from there.
Yeah, I think they have 11-foot strip for so far back from Baumgartner. They have a permanent easement. They've accepted that, and that's fine, and they support the project, so they have no issue with the project. You're welcome.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any persons representing a group that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Not. Are there any individuals that... For this, this petition right here that we're, we're talking about right now? No, it is not. That'll be next. Yes, sir. Are there any persons representing a group that would wish to speak in favor of the petition, individuals? Are there any persons representing a group that wish to speak in opposition to the petition or concern? Are there individuals that wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Will the petitioner come to the podium for rebuttal? We do not, because we don't have any opposition. Okay, could we now have a hand count? All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two. We got two. Three. Opposed? And that concludes this hearing. Thank you very much. Next, we have PC 35-24 Eric Scott and Janet Lewis.
Good evening. PC 35-24 Eric Scott and Janet Lewis is a request for a conditional use permit in the R1 and R3 residence districts for the recreational land uses, including but not limited to community market and farm tours. This tract is 7.73 acres, located on the east and west side of Eckert Lane at Sager Lane. As you can see from the context map on your left of your screen, this site is located in North County, and as you can see from the aerial photograph on the right, this site does contain three parcels. So for context, the individual one on the east side of Eckert Lane is zoned R3. The lower parcel is zoned R3, and the top parcel is zoned R1. This is just a larger aerial of that site, again, with those three parcels highlighted in red. As you can see, this site is primarily dominated by single-family homes, the Hazelwood Southeast Middle School, and Laramore Park, to be of note. So this is looking west onto the public hearing site, and this is on that R1 tract, so that top tract that you saw at the beginning. This is looking north up Eckert Road. This is looking south along Eckert Road. This is looking east along Eckert. This is looking west onto the R1, R3, two-sided on that western side of Eckert Road. This is looking west into the site. This is looking northwest. This is looking west into the site. This is looking north. Now we are inside the site. This is looking south inside the site as well. This is looking west, and we are in the very back of the site. This is looking west again. You can see Laramore Park through those shrubs a little bit. This is looking south, and we are on the south end of the property now. This is looking south at their trash enclosure. This is looking south onto the parking they have on site. This is looking west onto their second gate. This is looking south. This is looking east onto that single lot across the Eckert Lane. This is looking east. This is looking north again. We are heading down that second, that single lane on the east side of Eckert. This is looking east down the private road. And next, we'll have the petitioner.
Petitioner, please.
I just forgot my yellow card. Okay, I have it though. So just advance that way. Did you say that door?
Yeah, so focus, hit aim this here, and push here, and it will continue on. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Hello. Thank you for hearing our case. So I didn't really know what kind of slideshow to prepare.
Ms. Lewis, would you, would you introduce yourself for the record?
Okay, yes. Hi, so my name is Janet Lewis, and I'm the founder and the executive director of Rustic Root Sanctuary, which is a 501(c)(3) community farm in Spanish Lake. Sorry, I got nerves for some reason, so just bear with me. All right, so our mission is to sow seeds of sovereignty, teach sustainability, and holistically heal our community and reclaim our connection to Mother Earth. Rustic Root Sanctuary is addressing some systemic issues, and I wanted to give you a little background. Rustic Root Sanctuary works within the predominantly black community of Spanish Lake, a neighborhood within North St. Louis County, Missouri. The food ecosystem in the St. Louis Promise Zone grew out of historical racism, redlining, zoning ordinance, zoning ordinances, racial covenants, and other housing discrimination policies depleted resources from black communities. According to the USDA's Food Access Research Atlas, large sections of the Promise Zone are designated food deserts, defined as low-income census tracts with a significant share of residents more than half a mile from the nearest supermarket. Spanish Lake just so happens to be one of those tracts, and what the USDA calls food deserts, we call food apartheid, a system of segregation that divides those with access to an abundance of nutritious food, and those who have been denied that access due to systemic injustice. So at Rustic Root Sanctuary last year, we grew 18,640 pounds of food. We are great at growing and distributing healthy nutritious foods, and in 2024, our senior program served 90 families biweekly for 20 weeks. Some of the programs and services that we do are a weekly farmer's market, which was launched in 2021. It runs from mid-June to mid-October. The farmer's market sees up to 100 residents. It's one of the many ways we're creating healthy food access. We have mentorship programs. Like last year, we trained 10 BIPOC farmers in a program called From Dreaming to Implementation. We've also had BIPOC beekeeping mentorships, and by participating in sustainable agriculture mentorship programs, the next generation of farmers and environmentalists will gain invaluable knowledge and skills to create more, a more sustainable future for agriculture. We are a fully functioning farm. By visiting our farm, community members can gain a better understanding of where their food comes from. They have the opportunity to interact with a variety of farm animals, and the hands-on experience will not only educate on the importance of agriculture, but also foster a deep connection to the food that we eat. Rustic Root Sanctuary exists to influence, mentor, and support urban growers in communities all over St. Louis, leading to greater food access. The organization operates a variety of programs and initiatives to support wellness and healing for individuals and communities while teaching sustainable agriculture. This is where we started, so I want everybody to take a long look at that house. It was a nuisance property, and it was suffering from fires, vandalism, illegal dumping, and we, well, it was right next door, so that was one of the many reasons why we knew we had to take title to the property and do something with it. So where we started. We took this nuisance property and turned it into something beautiful for the community with the community. The Grow Spanish Lake Community Garden started it all, and then we have our mentorship programs, herbal classes, foraging classes, and healing programming. We are literally regenerating our community through regenerative agriculture. And so more about our sustainable farming and our practices and principles. Well, first of all, everything's grown organically, so we don't use any toxic chemicals or fertilizers on our food. We promote biodiversity by growing all different kinds and varieties of foods for the community. We use repurposed, upcycled materials in our buildings, and we advocate for a closed-loop system where almost all of the waste stays inside the farm, and basically like the animal byproducts go back to fertilizing the soil. And then we do composting of everything, too, so the food doesn't get wasted. It either gets fed to the chickens, or the goats, or it's composted. We know that marginalized communities have a right to natural resources. By creating a safe space for people from various spiritual, cultural, and economic backgrounds to immerse themselves in nature, obtain fresh produce, and informational programming, we are innovating systems to eliminate the inequities of health and address the social and economic factors that shape health outcomes. We seek to collaborate with St. Louis- that shape health outcomes. We seek to collaborate with St. Louis County to create lasting changes. Investing in a more equitable food system is one way to ensure the health of a community. We are at the intersection of racial justice, environmental justice, and social justice. We are paving a way for a more equitable and sustainable future for all. Our commitment to this integrated, interconnected approach means that our efforts can have a broader and more meaningful impact on the world around us. Let's work together to create positive change on multiple fronts. So our future plans and goals are to create a harvest hub for North County, which I'm just letting y'all know this is coming up next, possibly. So the goal is to provide a space where multiple farmers can access equipment that will make storing and packaging freshly harvested foods more efficient. The processing space will bridge key gaps in the middle of the food supply chain. After harvest, farmers will have a place to go and turn their produce into something ready to distribute. Most small farmers cannot afford to buy commercial equipment needed for bulk harvest, and local grocery stores need to start sourcing fresh local produce. We are constantly working on solutions to create local healthy food access. Meet our team, many of which are in the back right now. But one of the things that we've done is we've created, I think last year we got up to 12, and this year we have a core team of eight. So we have created a space that's actually employing people, and they're all making a living wage. They're actually paid above, you know, regular wages, which really stinks. So yes, these are all the people that are, that have a livelihood attached to Rustic Roots Sanctuary. Oh, and here are some pictures of what we're doing in the space. I'm really happy that Gretchen took the pictures of the land, because I totally forgot to take any, like, real pictures of the site. So we've been written up in several newspapers because of our work. This is from St. Louis NPR. And then we've also gotten an article that won, like, one of the best, it got a great award, I can't remember what it was, in the St. Louis American. You can see here in the lower left-hand corner, that's our Farm Dreamers. That was the mentorship program where we were teaching people to farm. There's Howard University. There's a nice, elegant farm-to-table dinner. And then there's a restorative women's event in the upper right-hand corner. And in the middle on the top, there's, well, on the left side, there's a baby eating a mulberry directly from a tree, and then a little boy on a pony ride. These are some of the many experiences that people are having in the space. And so these are just more pictures of our family, our community, and different events that brings this community together in Spanish Lake. And here is our site. So the places that people go on the land are pretty much everywhere, because we do educational farm tours, and we see schools, and we have lots of people come out and volunteer. So they would get a tour of the entire property. But where the A is, that is our yurt. And in the yurt, we do sound healing, meditation, and farms table dinners. And then, let's see, where the B is? The B is, or letter B is a shed that we were hoping to have turn into, like, our farm, our farmer's market booth, so that even when the weather's not good, we can still sell our produce. And C is the community garden, so that's where all the garden beds are, and the community comes in. They can rent their own garden bed for $25 a year and have access to all of these knowledgeable growers, and all the farm tools and fertilizers, like, natural fertilizers. I'm talking, like, horse manures and stuff like that, not anything that's toxic. They have access to all of that there, and they can learn how to grow, because a lot of people kind of want to dip their toe into growing before they plant their whole backyard. They'd rather have a little bed. And then, so that was C, and I know there's a D. Okay, D is really tiny. I don't know if you can see it, and I don't have a good pointer. But that's basically our outhouse, which a lot of people think is like the number-one special feature of the land. It's a shower house that has running water and a composting toilet. And then down there where E is, that's our parking lot, which Gretchen showed a picture of earlier. And yeah, it'll do about 10 spaces. So like, when we have vendors come in, like, if we have a spring celebration or a fall festival, there will be, I would say, 20, like, 10 by 10 booths set up on the land, and that's just different vendors and people that are selling their wares. And so I think that means we need, I figured it out before, but eight to 10 parking spaces, which we can have in that little E section. And I'm not sure that, yes, I think I covered all the things I needed to cover. And so that leads me to the thank you. So the issues that we currently face are due to outgrowing our current permitted land uses. We've been accountable to our community every step of the way. We've created programs that improve the lives of residents in Spanish Lake and North County and St. Louis as a whole. We are willing to do the work to continue to be a catalyst for change, but we're asking our county government to work with us. Let's sow the seeds of change together. And then I have a stack of letters, but I think, I think you already have them all?
You can hand them to me.
Okay.
They're so big. You gonna read them all?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, are there any questions?
Do we have any questions?
So how long have you been operating at that site?
So we got, so the garden was the first thing to happen in 2019, and then in 2020, we got our 501(c)(3) designation from the IRS. And so 2020 was our first official year.
But what's bringing this? I mean, I know it's R1, but what's happening now?
Sure. Why we're here this evening, yes. So the question, the use of the site for agricultural uses is not in question. R1 permits farming by right in the R1. And additionally, this evening, you will be also sending your letter of recommendation that will permit community gardens in all residential districts. So that will also ensure that that community garden uses are permitted on all residentially zoned districts. So the use of the entire parcel for any sort of agricultural use is not really in question tonight. What this conditional use permit would do is that allow for recreational land uses at the site. So farmer's markets, fairs, festivals, those kinds of uses can be permitted through the conditional use permit process that we would be going, that we're going through this evening. That way, the applicant, Ms. Lewis, would not need a special event permit, because right now she would require a special event permit every year. It's very limited in the number of times you can use them, which by nature, this process allows the commission to review it and grant wholesale use of, or recreational uses into the future without the necessity for future special use permits. So that's why we're here.
And can I just say, like, the last, since 2021, we had been getting farmer's market permits, so I thought everything was fine. And then this year, because of some issues with permits or something, it, we didn't get our farmer's market permit. So basically, we had to, the initial meeting that let us know we were, like, wrong, kind of just made us kind of shut the community out until we could figure out, like, what we were allowed to do in this space and what we weren't allowed to do in this space. But I think the conflicting zonings, well, without that R3 addendum, so I want to say thank you very much for doing the text addendum, because people need to be able to grow food in R3, especially in people, in areas that are suffering from food insecurity. And I just lost my train of thought. So anyway, at first it was okay, then it wasn't okay, so that's why I'm here. And I did do the R1 zoning hearing before, which I thought would be fine, but then the conflict became R3. It wasn't an allowable underlying use, and so here we are.
That's correct. Ms. Lewis was here for a change in zoning not that long ago, a few years ago.
2021.
So just a few years ago. So that's why some of the commissioners you may be familiar with, with this petition. And so what this conditional use permit, if granted, will do is it will clear up to ensure that she no longer has to go through a special event permit process, like I had stated. And the, and it was, it was, she's been getting farmer's markets permits. There were, and this is a, an issue at county government, sometimes one hand doesn't always know exactly what the other hand is doing. So that was, that was what has occurred. And I have to also state that Ms. Lewis is also, when she knew, she, when she was found out and made aware, she did exactly what she said, which is she wants to be in compliance, and she's been working diligently to bring the site into compliance.
I have a question. So what type of activities will change with the new conditional use permit versus you getting the individual event permits before?
Well, okay, so I never had to get the special event permit before. Unbeknownst to me, that was even something I needed to do. So I had gotten farmer's market permits and was able to have outside vendors come to the space and have a fully functioning Spanish Lake farmer's market. But this year, we found out that instead of just having the permit the way we had in prior years, we had to get a special event permit that would only allow, like, eight events for the year. And it just seemed like, when I looked at the special event permit, I was seeing, like, pyrotechnics and circuses and things like that. And I was like, this seems a little, like, above and beyond what we're doing on a little tiny, like, farm that's just a community farm. Like, we just want to be able to bring community in, have vendors come and make some money, like, just have something, like, in Spanish Lake that's special.
And how do you feel about the parking? Because you said you could have 10 vendors, and they could be supported by 10 parking spaces?
No. So when we have bigger events, we actually partner with Hazelwood Southeast Middle School, which is less than two blocks from the site. So, and we usually do hayrides. So we'll have a hayride shuttle from the school to the farm, and it's worked out great so far. So it's just a partnership with Hazelwood Southeast Middle, where we have to add them as an additional insured on our insurance, and then we get to use their parking lot.
I love that.
Yeah, they brought the kids by, too. So this is a great thing for the children in our area. They really need a place to go.
And philosophically, the special event permit is really intended for, say, you're, you know, you're having a block party in your neighborhood. It's meant to capture those one-off events, or say you're, you own a commercial, a commercial development, and you want to have, like, one of those small carnivals that you'll see frequently on large parking lots. Whereas this conditional use permit will, through this review and through subsequent review of a site development plan, will ensure that the uses that she's describing are appropriate all year long. That way, it cuts out the requirement for that, that special event permit, because these special event permits also include things like police review each time, health department review each time. So other things that can be honestly quite onerous. Whereas, you know, Ms. Lewis, when she gets a farmer's market permit subsequent to this next year, that is her, that is, you know, is the, is the health review. So this process would ensure that she does not have to go through that special event permit process, and makes it easier and simpler for her.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just have one question. What are the hours of your farmer's market? Is it on just Saturdays?
It has, it was on Saturdays this year, because we kind of changed everything up. It used to be, last year, we did it 4:00 PM to sunset on Wednesdays. And this year, we moved it to 9:00 to 12:00, because we could have, just sell our personal produce without any outside vendors. That was permitted. So we did that, and we moved it to Saturday 9:00 to 12:00.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So it's three parcels, right?
Yes.
Is there any consideration to consolidate those lots into one lot?
That would be, we discussed that with, and because one of them is actually across the street. So you, so could, could Ms. Lewis consolidate her two parcels? Yes, but it's not necessary. The zoning won't, as long as she does not construct anything over a building line, or, excuse me, over a property line, that will not, that will not preclude her from, so she doesn't, it's not necessary for the use as she's presenting.
I hope you come out. I'm inviting all of you to come out. Please come to the space. And...
It really is a nice venue. I've attended many times.
Lou, you scared me.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Mr. Kind of handling, you're from, but you're behind her, so she had no idea that you were there.
I'm sorry. Just wanted to say that it is a really nice venue. I've been there multiple times, taking my grandchildren, or grandson, and my daughters. So I'm definitely an advocate, glad to have her in Spanish Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, are there any persons representing that group that wish to speak in favor of the petition? Please come down. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. We reference God. We give honor to Mr. Sam Page in his absence. My name is Reverend Mark L. Coleman, Sr. I'm a husband. I'm a father. I'm a grandfather. I'm a great-grandfather. I want to leave my family an inheritance. I want to keep the main thing the main thing, seed tag, sowing. And that's what it seem like they're trying to do. And I want to be supportive of that. This year, I was only able to put in my backyard two tomato plants, one big beef and a small cherry, and one bell pepper. But we have a problem with squirrels that like to eat, so I had to let them have their portion, too. See, what God does, he take care of everybody. So I'm just here representing Glasgow Village. Our president, Ms. Tammy, was not able to make it because her husband was sick, and she had to do double duties tonight. So I come from Glasgow Village, where I have lived since 1995. The last time I was here was when Steve Stinger, the day before he was indicted. He heard them call my name. He jumped up and ran out. I said, "You can run, but your show can't hide." He was indicted the next day. I was telling him about what's been going on with us, neglected, disrespected. We got all that community, not one playground for our kids. But we want to keep the main thing the main thing. You are what you eat. You eat junk, you gonna be a junkie. You eat good food, you got a chance to be healthy in your body, in your mind. All I'm saying, create the opportunity for us to advance ourselves, to help ourselves, to be able to bring others in and be fed. See, I grew up where my mother suffered trying to make it. Sometime when she walked in that kitchen, it looked like nothing was in there. But when Mama left... left out the kitchen, when she went in, she took the onions, bell pepper, tomato sauce, oxtails. Next thing I know, we smelling it. Hot water cornbread, some corn, green beans, iced potatoes, all in there, mixed in that together. We ate good, but we were poor. So that's why I'm here, to say, bless them, help them. We like to help them. As I said, my name is Reverend Mark L. Coleman. I'm here representing Glasgow Village. We need your help to help ourselves. God bless you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons representing the group in favor?
My name is Sister Rosemary Dowling. I am a member of the Franciscan Sisters of Mary. You would know us best, best by SSM Health. We do other things, but that's what we're usually know our, know our name with. Anyway, I'm here to represent the Franciscan Sisters of Mary, who have supported Rustic Roots Sanctuary since nineteen, nineteen, see I'm old, twenty nineteen. I'd like to say that our focus as Franciscan Sisters of Mary is the following. Focus on the, we focus the power of our intention on care of creation and collaboration with others. So we, as Franciscan Sisters of Mary, have a very deep rooted interest and care, care about the care of creation, and part, part of that creation is all human beings, as well as the earth and all that's part of that. So it's been a real joy for us to be joined in our presence and our philanthropy work with Rustic Roots Sanctuary. We've seen them be very successful and be of great service in the North County area. And so I would really encourage you to help them as, as we're helping them and other people are helping them, to be the best they can to keep continuing to grow what they're growing in the North County. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Another person representing the group? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne T. James. I'm here in favor of the petition. So I put it, I work for the University of Missouri Extension. We run a program called Neighborhood Leadership Fellows, which works with neighborhood leaders to instill change in their community. And Janet was a, or is a graduate of the program, graduated in twenty twenty, in the effort to improve her community. In improving her community, she works with community to ensure that everything that she does is for the benefit of the community and not for the benefit of herself. And Rusty Roots is a, basically a symbol of that, ensuring that the work that is going in to basically provide jobs, provide education, provide healthy food, provide an educational atmosphere to provide a community in a sense of, of Spanish Lake is showcased in everything that you actually see in the pictures, everything that you actually heard today, and everything that you will witness once you go out and actually visit the sanctuary. I was there this past Saturday, helping to press apple cider from apples, and the education that was going on to see exactly how do you use apples to actually make something that's nutritious for everyone. Bringing in people from Kansas City, bringing in people from all of Spanish Lake and all of St. Louis is something that we need for our community, not just in Spanish Lake, but all of St. Louis. And so I ask that you approve this, this permit for, for her to continue the work that she doing, and basically do everything in our power to basically expand the work that she's doing, not just in St. Louis, and not just in Spanish Lake, but in all of St. Louis. Thank you.
Are there any other persons representing the group that like to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Lane. My family and I form on lands in North St. Louis County, by the name of Odds and Ends Forum. To the members of the St. Louis County Planning Commission, we are writing to express our support of rezoning of Rustic Roots Sanctuary. This forum season, there was something missing from our community, from our life as farmers. From June to October, we would normally gather with our North County neighbors for the weekly farmers market, and then again at various interactive events that were hosted at 11735 Eckert Lane in Spanish Lake. But for twenty twenty-four, that was not the case. The dictionary describes the word sanctuary as a place of refuge or safety, a nature reserve, a holy place. Many who have ever visited the space would agree that Rustic Roots is an oasis of substance within the area surrounded by food insecurity. A nearby retreat that allows you briefly to step out of normal city life and into the serene of nature that has been carefully stewarded for conservation. And when you depart, you feel as if you're departing a holy place, as you have experienced a reconnection within your soul. There are a few thousand nonprofits operating in St. Louis County. We know of only one whose mission and capacity directly supports the health of mind, body, and soul. Rusty Root Sanctuary has become a cornerstone, supporting the rebirth of Spanish Lake and the surrounding North County municipalities. And we ask that the planning commission grants conditional use and continue to work with them in good faith, as their team continues to restore land, buildings, and community. Thank you, Vincent Lane.
Thank you.
Those are also submitted within the, within the letter. But my family and I thought it was important for us to get representation today in person, and speak on, on the behalf of Rusty Roots. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any other person wish to speak for a group in favor? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Stevens, and I'm speaking in favor of Rusty Roots Sanctuary, receiving any and all support that they need to move forward with the beautiful and wonderful community work that they do. I want you to think about a visionary in your life that you've known that has offered the most inspirational and influential impact in your life, just for a moment. And think about what your life would be like without that person. I get so emotional because Janet has been so transformative in the community and in my life personally. I've met some very best friends through this organization. Sorry, sorry. But imagine your life without that most influential person that has been there for you, and not only for your family. She's offered my husband raises when we needed it. She's offered support financially. My husband is the farm manager, and Janet and I have become extremely close friends. She's that type of person. She's a visionary, a leader. She's a remarkable woman, and her and Eric together, Eric Scott, are this remarkable power couple that will do anything for anyone in the community. They offer a safe healing space for the BIPOC, BIPOC community, and they offer such an inclusion, inclusive opportunity to create connections of biodiversity, diversity. And like Vince said, you feel like your soul has been awakened when you step foot on this land. They cultivate community and stewardship in ways that I've never seen before, and I've been farming organically for twenty years. And they just bring the love and the joy. I'll say two other things. This year on our farm, we, we also do a lot of, we have ten acres. I saw one monarch butterfly at our farm, even though we plant dozens and dozens of pollinator attractor plants. I went to volunteer the other day at Rustic Roots, and I saw five monarch butterflies in Spanish Lake. And it's, it's really powerful, because we're losing so much biodiversity. So they, they do it all. They focus on diversity and inclusion, biodiversity, and so much more. And in light of today being Indigenous Peoples' Day, I just want to mention that today I went to a lecture from a gentleman who's in the tribal elder in the Cherokee Nation. And he brought out a yardstick. He said that the only prop he ever brings to speaking engagements, he didn't have a PowerPoint, he just read from his notes, and gave the most riveting speech I've ever heard today. But he pulled out this yardstick, and it was, it was two tones, one tone representing fourteen thousand years that indigenous communities have lived in harmony with the earth, providing everything they need for their families and surviving and thriving. And then the other tone was this, it was this big compared to this big, which represents three hundred years, the last three hundred years, that humans have really messed up this, us, all of the rest of us, not including indigenous cultures, have really messed up the earth. We need regenerative farms. We need this in our lives. We need this for our future, for seven generations ahead, and we need this now. So please, offer her any and all support, and excuse my emotions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any other individuals that would like to speak in favor? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sunny Hutton. I'm with the So Joy Peoples' Fund. We are a funder here in the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and Eilside. We actually fund BIPOC-led groups that focus on environmental justice, and Rustic Roots is one of our grantees. I am the co-director, along with Amanda Teo, who cannot be here with us today. But we are also one of the first community participatory funds. So that means instead of our, instead of our fund being led by rich families or corporate entities, we are led and ran by community, those who are impacted. So we get our orders from them. But I want to say and speak to Rustic Roots Sanctuary, the reason that we decided to make an investment in them is because of their connection to Mother Earth. I remember growing up, I went through the Ferguson-Florescent School District, and we always had a little place that we can go to called Little Creek. And Little Creek is where I found my passion for earth. There was also this little farm right in between Ferguson and Kenlock, that I could go to and learn some traditional farming practices. But there was one thing that those places missed, and that was the community aspect of it. And when I come to Rustic Roots, I feel at home. It's where I find serenity, where I find peace. And the fact that they're regenerating our ecosystems is another reason why we put our funds, we put money behind this organization, because we believe in them. So I'm coming to you today on behalf of So Joy Peoples' Fund, and asking you to support them in any way possible, so that we can move forward, and we can all get back home to the farm, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Cookie Mitchell, and I am a resident of Spanish Lake. I have been with Janet and Eric since they dug the dirt. So volunteered and tried to let people know about Rusty Group Sanctuary, all on the same page. So she came up with this idea to help the community because it's underserved. We have one grocery store feeding more than, I think sixteen thousand, the last I checked. In that program that she stirred up, she, she had these seniors who are, as most of you know, on fixed incomes. They probably even grew up on some forms. And she decided that for those people, including me, that she would give them every week bags and bags of vegetables. And then she opened up where they start coming out, and they felt comfortable. And they would sit around and talk about how they grew this, and some kind of salad grass or nose. And they became so connected with Rustic Roots. I'm like that lady. I have some of them in tears, because they haven't been able to, to go out and do the things that they were doing out there. They feel so comfortable. And it's just not the seniors in Spanish Lake. It's some of the people that bring their families. I mean, and then she decided, okay, I got North County. So she started where she could do vegetables, and not having enough people to transport the stuff, she said they can come pick it up. Bags and bags and bags every week, people come out. She has them to do this exit form at the end of every season. You ought to see the things that I have read, where the doctors have told them how their health has changed, where their whole attitude, truthfully, has changed, because they feel like they're attached. They feel like they're welcome. Spanish Lake don't have much of that, even though y'all got all these during parks and all of that. This was different to them, and it is different. It's different to the whole community of Spanish Lake, all of North County. When you come out, you'll see. I even sent in an email to planning, y'all probably got it, telling you about how people feel about Spanish Lake, on behalf of Janet. I don't know what happened, but I know what it did to the community. And we're trying to grow. And if you take things that are improving, their living conditions, then y'all don't want it to grow either. That's, I mean, seriously, you know. Today, I, I called Bingo up at Twillman for the seniors, and that's all they talked about was Rustic Roots. I'm not joking. Y'all should sit in on some of that and hear some of these people. They were over to telling about the purple okra. You know, I, I mean, just the small things that, that just bring the community together. Rustic Roots is a pillar to me in the community. I had this idea for people to know, like, like you, that didn't know about places in Spanish Lake, been there all their life. And I'm saying her because I heard her say she's surprised. I'm surprised too, seriously. So I had this idea to do a tour, so that people who had been out there twenty-nine years, or all their life, didn't know what was around them. Janet was the only one in the community that would support that.
Mr. Chair, that's time.
I'm sorry. She was the only one that supported it. And when the people came out, they were like you, and probably like all of you, since, since she's invited you. When I came to the, what is, they all have on Tuesdays, I invited all of them. I told them they should have came out. I don't know why they give people hard times, they're trying to do good.
Mrs. Mitchell, your time's up. We've got a lot of other people want to talk in, in favor. Thank you very much. Do we have somebody else that would like to speak in favor?
Mr. Taylor, for the time, are these individuals speaking on behalf of a group or as an individual?
Mr. Taylor, for the time, are these individuals speaking on behalf of a group or as an individual? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Karen Jalian Yang. I'm the Director of Storytelling and Communications at Ford through Ferguson, as well as President of the Board of Solidarity Economy St. Louis. So these are two ways in which I know of Rustic Roots Sanctuary. I first met Janet and looked at the farm as part of Solidarity Economy St. Louis, been part of their farm tours and seen so many people experience and learn from those. And as far as Ford through Ferguson, we are one of three organizations that started the Racial Healing and Justice Fund, which was a response in the pandemic to the important needs of resourcing Black and Brown-led healing and justice initiatives. And so I, along with Sunny Hutton's testimony earlier, am speaking to not just the people in this room that are supportive of Rustic Roots Sanctuary, but also community-led grant-making. So there are generally eight to 14 members across the St. Louis region that make decisions about grants that go, you know, people apply. And Rustic Roots Sanctuary was one of the first rounds of grantees for the Racial Healing and Justice Fund. So that just speaks to, just, they have to review so many applications, more applications than there actually is funding for. And Rustic Roots made it. And when I talked to Janet about the impact of that fund on her farm, it was speaking to that kind of senior produce distribution that was happening during the pandemic. And all, all of us know how frantic a time that was for us. There was so much insecurity, not just regionally, but nationally and internationally around food. And Janet and the Rustic Roots Sanctuary team were making sure that there was some sense of stability, some sense of care for people during that time. So don't need to repeat any of the other things that other people have mentioned about how it feels to be on the farm, but just want to add my voice as part of these two organizations, as well as the fact that I'm a daughter of Taiwanese immigrants. My father is from a farming family in southern Taiwan, and it does feel like home being there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals like to speak for a group?
Good night. I am representing individually, but I work at Washington University in St. Louis. I am Assistant Professor at the Brown School, the School of Social Work. And we have been collaborating with Janet since 2023. We have received two large federal grants, one from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention and another one from the National Association, National Association for Chronic Disease Directors. And I can just only attest to everything that has been said here, that Rustic Roots Sanctuary is really a noise. I heard someone else using that expression earlier, of fresh and felt and healthy produce that goes to the community in Spanish Lake. And through our program evaluation, we have seen that health outcomes have improved. We've seen that community members have better diets and that they have better quality of life and more social engagement and community engagement. So I'm just here sort of from the research academic side to attest that everything that they do is incredibly important for the community and very much needed in, in areas that have been disinvested for so long. So I just urge you to please support their, their permit.
What was that second grant? You said National Association?
National Association for Chronic Disease Directors. So the first grant was called BRIC, which stands for Building Resilient and Inclusive Communities. And then when that ended, we received funding again. And the new grant is called REACH, is the Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health.
Will you please state your name for the record?
Sorry, my name is Diana Parra, D.I.A.N.A. Parra, P-A-R-R-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other individuals like to speak for a group in favor? Any individuals like to speak in favor? Please come up. Thank you.
I just want to speak very briefly that I was born and raised. My name's Claire Kinberg. And I'm just speaking as an individual. That I was born and raised in St. Louis County, moved away for 37 years and lived in many places around the country that was involved with community-supported education, culture, urban farming and suburban farming in many different places. And when I was considering moving back to my hometown of St. Louis, I read about Rustic Roots and have to say that it was one of the reasons that I said, yes, I'm going to move back to St. Louis County.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, my name is Sandra Thornhill. I'm a being of love, light, and energy. I serve in many realms in this capacity. Most of my work is within the reproductive justice space. I do serve as a doula and a reproductive justice advocate. I came to know Rustic Roots a few years ago when I lived in Kansas City. I'm actually born and raised in St. Louis myself, moved off to Kansas City for college, and I did a whole bunch of things there in Kansas City, including joining a leadership program that traveled back home to St. Louis, and we had a tour of Rustic Roots. Now, being born and raised in St. Louis, we are, I'm three generations here. My grandfather tells me all about pretty much the displacement of our people from the city into the North County area. And I get to see how we were moved and moved into North County, being a DSEC student myself of St. Louis area. But coming here to see North County in the light of a leadership program and getting introduced to Rustic Roots made me think about my family. My family who was still here in St. Louis and how I wanted them to have access to a place, a sanctuary like Rustic Roots. So a few years ago, before I moved back to St. Louis, I just kept thinking, I got to get my cousins out there. I got to get my family out there. I got to get my nieces and nephew out to Rustic Roots because they're doing amazing things. And I've been on the forum, they need to be on the forum too. It's right in the backyard of North County, right in my mother-in-law's backyard, right in my mom's backyard. We have to get them out there. Luckily, I moved back to St. Louis. Last year, and I was able to join Rustic Roots as a board member, and I got my family out there. So you all have heard a lot of great things about what Rustic Roots is doing for the community. One of the great things that I got to see was when I got my friends and my family members on the forum in May. And one of my friends, actually, she's a single parent. She's been going through a lot of different systemic barriers through her lifetime and even through her children's lifetime. She got to win an awesome, an awesome like gift from Rustic Roots where her family could receive fresh produce all season long at the farmer's market. So they were so excited in May when they learned about this. She was elated. Her little girl got the ticket and was like, yay, we won. Only to find out a few weeks later that they wouldn't have access to that fresh produce that they really needed, that was going to make a difference for their family because of the barriers that we see within policy that made it hard for the people to access the food that they needed. And so that was so disheartening this summer, to finally get my family out there, to finally get my friends to come to the forum, for them to actually win an awesome, awesome token where they will have fresh produce all season long, just to know that, hey, you know, you can't get it that way. You're going to have to go online and do this and do that. It was too many barriers by that point. And so my friend wasn't able to actually access the gift that she was given because of these zoning things and whatever's going on, on the political side. And so I, I don't need to speak too much more about the greatness of Rustic Roots, but what I want to speak to is when politics makes barriers for people, it has a real impact. And it had a real impact on that single mother who has three kids, two boys, and a little girl, and them not being able to come get their fresh produce from the forum all summer because of that farmer's market permit barrier. So I say, please support reducing barriers to access for our community. Please support Rustic Roots in getting whatever permits that they need so that we, they can truly serve the community and not have to go through all the hoops and wringers to make it easier or making more accessible for our community. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you for the time. And thank you, Rustic Roots, thank you Janet, and our Rustic Roots family.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Alan Ship, and I grew up in North County, right down the street from where Rustic Roots is. I graduated from Hazelwood East. I went to Kirby Middle before it was changed to Hazelwood East Middle. And as a young boy, I liked to walk and travel and walk around. And I remember that area back there before it was, you know, Rustic Roots, and there was nothing really back there for me to find. And I believe that this place needs this type of support for other, you know, children and people in that neighborhood to be able to go and pick fresh produce and interact with the people who work there and things like that because a smiling face and, and good food and things like that can change a person. It can change a person's personality and how they decide to want to move in the world. I grew up with a lot of people who, you know, they had negative mindsets. And if they had things like this in their life, I believe that their negative mindset could have been changed at a much earlier age. And like the Reverend was saying, when you eat junk, you don't feel like junk. You might act like junk. But when you eating good and you eating something that's been produced with like love and, and care, that's going to get inside of you, that's going to change you, that's going to make you want to, that, that will make you want to be more caring, more loving, and all types of things. So I do believe that this Rustic Roots Sanctuary deserves the support of you guys. And that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals that'd like to speak? Okay, are there any individuals that like, would like to speak for a group in opposition? None? Are there any individuals that would like to speak in opposition or concerned? There are none? With that being said, could we have a hand count of people in favor, please?
And please hold them up for a moment.
Yes.
Okay, I had 23.
I had 24.
Can we count off?
What, what the audience needs to realize is that we're kind of blinded by these lights. That's why we're, that's why we're all struggling up here. I have about.
I think there's about 34 out there.
Mr. Taylor has 34, so we're going to go with Mr. Taylor's number. It's the highest. We will, we will take Mr. Taylor's.
Is there anybody in opposition?
Any question? So we will ensure that all public comment is part of the record, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. That concludes this hearing. Thank you very much for attending.
All right, so we do have business, so we'll let them clear out.
Alan, you want to take a little break here for about two or three minutes?
They're going to take up, recessive mute their mic, Sally.
Okay, you're unmuted.
Okay. Bring this executive session to order. Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedeau?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you do have a quorum.
Okay. First letter recommendation, PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC.
Good evening, Commissioner. PC 27-24 Block Holly Commercial Real Estate LLC has a request for amended developments in the M3 and FBM3 industrial district for the purpose of office warehousing, including outdoor storage on the 7.22 acre tract located in the north side of Bamgatna Road, approximately 1,500 feet east of Idbamgatna Industrial Drive. From the county context map, the subject site is located in South County, and to the right of the screen is the site outlined in red. And this is larger area. The site development plan shown at the public hearing, it shows the development of a new one-story 60,000 square foot building. It also shows outdoor storage area with perimeter screening and a six-foot tall site proof fence. Access to the site is going to remain via the existing cop car on Bamgatna Road. It showed 28 proposed parking spaces and proposed retaining walls, trash enclosure, and stormwater management basin. The department is recommending approval because the planned industrial district is appropriate for the redevelopment of the site that has been home to industrial users for a long time. The developmental conditions inherent to the M3 planned industrial district will ensure the proposed development is compatible with surrounding uses and ensure reasonable improvement to the site. The proposed uses of the tract are reasonable and appropriate at the site and with surrounding permitted developments. Some of the revisions I would like to see, increased landscaping is required along the western property line about residential developments, architectural review shall be required. The facade along Bamgatna Road requires significant improvements, including the use of more high-quality materials and significant finestration. The treatment shall also run the 400 feet down the east and west facade of the structure. Windows and doors on the front facade shall include awnings or other embellishments. And office seats shall be decorative in style, and concrete cup shall be installed in the new parking area. And at this time, I request for your motion.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it with eight for approval. Next, we have PC 33-24 TriStar Real Estate Acquisition.
PC 33-24 TriStar Real Estate Acquisition LLC is a request for amended developments in MSD Misused District to allow multiple family residences and all city permitted uses on the tract size of 18.07, located in east side of Timber Run Drive, north side of Olive Boulevard. From the county context map, the site is located in mid-county, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. And this is a larger area. It is bounded by residential and commercial developments predominantly. Um, the petition is a request for amended developments in the MSD misuse development district to permit multiple family attached residences and all C three shopping district permitted uses. The requested uses are multiple family attached pickleball courts, clubhouse with pool, and two commercial lots with structures and a standalone restaurant with a drive-through. The Commissioner should note that the tract was the subject of PC twenty-one dash twenty-three and twenty-one dash twenty-four TriStar Real Estate Acquisition. PC twenty-one dash twenty-three permitted twenty, two hundred and fifteen multiple family units, two commercial lots with one standalone, with one standalone restaurant with a drive-through and one low-volume pickup window. While PC twenty-one dash twenty-four TriStar Real Estate Acquisition was an, was an amendment to PC twenty-one dash twenty-three, but was withdrawn without prejudice. And this is the preliminary site development plan shown at the public hearing. Um, the first third of the site plan is the central development that shows the proposed several multiple family residences and commercial lots containing two commercial structures. The middle part is the least area that's currently housing the Good Shepherd School. And then the third portion would contain the dog park, pickleball court, and pavilion, the covert pavilion as proposed. Department is recommending approval because a mixed development, including multiple family attached residences, a range of commercial uses, pickleball courts, and a dog park is reasonable along Olive Boulevard and in line with the desired goals of the county's strategic plan. The proposed use of the mixed use development district will ensure conditions of development, including residential and commercial design standards, lightning and landscaping plans will be required and met. Some of the revisions that we would like to see is that um, the department is recommending seats to shopping district permitted uses because it is appropriate at the site. Architectural review is also required to ensure cohesive design throughout the entire development, and the site shall be limited to one drive-through facility and pickup window. And at this time, my request for your motion.
Heard the recommendation of the department. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Does pickleball move?
I think so. Or, I don't remember seeing pickleball.
Don't remember.
Thought it was on there.
Multiple go-arounds, that it was.
I don't think, it may not have been on the first, on the first, but the re, the most recent one it was. Well, this is the third time we've seen it in a, in a year, so.
Also, the most recent go-around, they expanded the parking, or a portion of like, behind the Walgreens, right?
They, that was the second portion, and then they dropped that.
That, that's what they dropped.
Yes, they dropped that. So they've gone back to, it's the, it's change, it expanded the second time, then it's contracted a little bit, so it's um, it, it's, yes. And also, the style of the residences and therefore its density. So it's now seventy-seven attached uh, multifamily units versus what had been originally approved, which was two hundred and fifteen multifamily um, units.
That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it with eight. Eight aye. Uh, next is a letter of recommendation for PC zero-four dash twenty-four St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Before you all vote aye, I just want to say, I am so glad we have pulled this over the finish line. Abby has worked so hard on this. So Abby, really great job. This is the largest staff-led text amendment that we've done in a really, really long time. Um, you've done a really great job, and I really appreciate what you've done here.
Thank you. This is PC oh-four twenty-four St. Louis County Planning Commission. This is a letter of recommendation consistent with um, your action on the information report. So we're recommending approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I don't think there's any questions, is there? All right, with that being said, all those in favors?
So this will, um, this should be on council's agenda on the twenty-second, um, so not tomorrow, a week from tomorrow. Um, then it would take four weeks. Typically, it's out there, it's at council for four weeks. It has to be entered, received and filed, introduced, perfected, passed on four, so that'll occur um, over a month. And then zoning matters, the moment that they're signed by the county executive become effective. Um, so this could become effective in less than six weeks if there are no um, hiccups along the way.
That being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Eyes have it with eight. Now, back up again, we have PC twenty-seven dash twenty-four Block Holly Commercial Real Estate Services LLC.
That's the letter of recommendation for.
The one we did already.
Yes.
Yes.
We had it back up in here.
Yeah.
Scratch it out. Uh, recommendation of PC thirty-one dash twenty-four Alliance Animal Health.
This is a letter of, PC thirty-one dash twenty-four Alliance Animal Health is a request for a conditional use permit in the C two shopping district for an animal hospital, veterinary clinic, and freestanding ATM at a point five-six acre tract on the southeast quadrant of Gravoy Road and Tesson Ferry Road. And this letter of recommendation is consistent with the Commission's information report from the previous uh, commission meeting. So we're recommending approval.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? With that, can we signify by saying aye for all those approving, to approve?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero. Okay. Next, we have PC twenty-seven dash twenty-four forty-nine dash eighty-two Joseph C. Dwyer.
Good evening, PC forty-nine dash eighty-two Joseph C. Dwyer. Um, this is a request to amend the setbacks in the C eight ordinance ten thousand seven hundred and seventeen. The zoning on this site is a C eight. Um, the proposed use is for a dentist office on six point eight acres located on the west side of Barrett Station Road and south of Manchester Road. Um, this site may be familiar to this commission as you did have an amendment ordinance uh, change in May of twenty twenty-four. Um, this site is located in mid-county, um, in the Manchester, right off of Manchester Road and Barrett Station. Um, the site in question is outlined in red on the aerial to your right. This is just a larger aerial again. So again, just for some context, um, PC forty-nine dash eighty-two Joseph C. Dwyer was a change in zoning from NU non-urban and FP NU floodplain non-urban district to the C eight plan commercial district and FPC floodplain plan commercial district to permit an office park. C eight ordinance ten thousand seven hundred seventeen was adopted in August of nineteen eighty-two. Um, previous ordinance amendments include in nineteen eighty-seven ordinance thirteen thousand four hundred eleven, which increased the maximum area to sixty-four thousand nine hundred square feet of gross floor area. In nineteen ninety-seven, ordinance eighteen thousand six hundred fifty-two permitted a communication tower not to exceed a hundred twenty feet in height. Um, that communication tower was never developed. And then, in this year of May of twenty twenty-four, ordinance twenty-nine thousand zero sixty-six permitted a dental and medical offices. The current request before this commission tonight is to amend the western structure setbacks and to amend the stream buffer setbacks. So this is the site plan that they proposed showing the, um, they want to just expand the building, um, which is that yellow area, um, so it would alter their setbacks on that western property line. And then this area is covered in floodplain, so they had to, originally when they read this, um, the stream buffer only affects residential parcels, so um, our Department of Transportation Public Works did take a look at this site. They do want them to have a floodplain permit done, and they will look at things during um, site plan approval, but they did not have any concerns. So the staff is recommending approval, um, adjusting the setback to the western property line is reasonable, um, as the building will be shielded by the vegetation in the common ground area. Also, the amendment to the stream buffer setback is not necessary, um, as its reference setback requirement applies to residential buildings, so it's not a concern for the commission tonight, um, so only the setback is the concern. And at that, I'll ask for a motion.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Eyes have it, eight, zero. And then we have, uh, was this pulled?
Yeah, this, this is the.
Which one?
The McBride. This is the, this is a withdrawal without prejudice.
Yes. So, PC thirty-four dash twenty-four McBride Barrow Land Company LLC. Um, this was supposed to come before this planning commission, um, for a request for a change in zoning from the R two residence district to the R six residence district for attached single-family residences on a seven point nine acre lot, um, east of Lindbergh Boulevard at Link Road. This never became before this planning commission at public hearing. They did ask to be held. Um, so as you can see, this site is located in mid-north county, um, and it did consist of two parcels. This is just a larger aerial of the site. So this was a request for a change in zoning from R two to R six residential district for attached single-family housing. Um, the petition was held per the petitioner's request prior to the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four public hearing. Um, since then, the petitioner has requested to withdraw due to the amount of soil mediation that would be required for the site. Um, so staff is recommending approval of withdrawal without prejudice for the site.
Heard the motion. Do we have a uh, motion for approval? Other recommendations?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, eight, zero. And next we have PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two. Ladies in.
PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two, our ladies in, um, is a, coming before this commission tonight as approval for a site plan and architectural elevations. Um, this was a request before this commission for a change in zoning from the R two residence district to the R five residence district with a PEU for a group home. Um, this was for like, single mothers who needed a place to be. Um, it's on seven point three-seven acres located on the north side of Big Ben Road at the corner of Longstone Lane. Um, so as you can see, this is, again, is in south mid-county, and you can see from the aerial on the right is the site outlined in red. So, um, the facility is similar to what this um, commission saw back in twenty twenty-two. Um, a single T-shaped building. They will have an outdoor play area, no playground equipment, um, but they will have a sunshade area, um, just for people to kind of walk around and have some time outside. Um, heavily landscaped per the commission's request, um, along with the natural vegetation of the site. And as you can see in the top there, it is the sunshade that they're proposing. These are the architectural elevations, as well as the sign and the fence that they will have along the back, um, all again, meeting the standards that the commission asked for when this came before and became a PEU ordinance. Um, staff is recommending approval of the site plan and the architectural elevations.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just want to point out, and just as for a history, um, is that this was actually the site that the, the planning commission had made a recommendation for approval. This did have a lawsuit, so there was a, this is a set, a lawsuit settlement that um, created this, this um, which basically mirrors the exact conditions that the commission put forward. Um, so us approving, bringing this before you is in line with the lawsuit settlement um, that St. Louis County entered into with our ladies in, uh, to settle the zoning case.
Okay. What happens if we don't approve it?
Well, Mr. Bedell, as a land use attorney, um, I would, I would say that, um, whether we would be opening ourselves to legal litigation, um, or whether the courts would simply dictate and say that you have, the county has agreed to this, um, I could not, I could not tell you how that would play out. Um, but what I will say is that we only brought it before this commission after, um, we had determined that it met all of the conditions, which is the, really the question in front of the commission tonight, is does it meet the conditions of that agreement? And we only bring it to you when we've determined that it does.
Any other questions?
Even if it's not approved, and I mean, so this came before you in year twenty-two, so even if it's not approved, it still goes to the council, and they make the final decision. We're just the recommending body.
That is correct. This is, yes.
Or against.
And at this stage, this is the, this will be the approved site development plan, because this has gone through council, this has gone through, um, a very circuitous route to get back to us, uh, here in front of the commission, um, two plus years later after it was originally heard, so.
I have a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there? Are you the first one? Did we already have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
And you're the second?
Well, someone is the second.
Okay.
Mr. Elliott was the second.
Mr. Bedell was the second?
No, Mr. Elliott was the second.
Okay. Very good. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Eyes have it, eight, zero. Uh, we didn't approve the meeting minutes of the last meeting. Everybody have a chance to read those? Okay. Could I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes? Opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero.
Aye.
Uh, go to the order.
Yes, um, briefly, um. So Paul and the team have been hard at work on the comprehensive plan, so where we are right now is they are working on, uh, the future land use plan. So it is a, it is, it, I wish you guys were in the office with us, because it's super cool what they're, some of what they're doing, and we can't wait to show, uh, you and residents, uh, what we've been putting together. Uh, but the town, the, excuse me, the open houses, if they're not on your calendars yet, um, there are open houses in mid-November where the um, draft recommendations of the plan will be, um, we'll be putting them in, in, in-person meeting. Um, so there'll be one in North County, one in South County, one in mid-county, um, as much as possible. Really love to see you all, uh, at least one of them, to sort of walk through and see those, um, see those recommendations. I think they're gonna be hopefully really, uh, really great. Um, so, and with that, oh, one thing I also wanted to.
Did your office send out invites for that, or were we supposed to?
Paul hasn't yet, I'll make sure that he gets that on everyone's calendars. Okay. Um, addition, oh, did you have a question? Oh, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, I know that, that, that background noise, I, was kind of what, I was like, um, and then also I wanted to note that we are not having a public hearing in November. Uh, we are not scheduling one for November. We will have an executive meeting to take up, um, the issues that we heard, that we heard this evening, but we will not be having a public hearing. We'll be having a public hearing in December, and also you will be getting the invite to Jacob's annual Christmas party, which is always the first Friday in December, so. So be on the lookout for.
When is our executive meeting, uh, in November? We know yet?
Uh, Abby can make it.
Fourth, November fourth.
Yeah, November fourth.
Yes.
Okay. Are we, are, are we going to have our continuing education at that executive?
Uh, we may in November, we may wait until December. It'll just, we just don't want to have it tonight, uh, just with what time it is. I figured that.
Jacob, can you tell us what time the party is so we can put it on our calendar?
Uh, usually it starts at six. Yeah. So.
Any, anybody else have anything? All right, with that, uh, I'd like to get a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Eyes have it, eight to zero, and we will see everybody back here November fourth at six P M.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.